I thought you were calling for the turkey.
No, I'm starting to attend in the church.
Good afternoon, everybody. It is July 2nd, 2025. Harney County Court is in session, regular session today. Everybody stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, so just for the record, it's five o'clock. We're having a five o'clock meeting today because we had a county strategic planning meeting session today from eleven to three o'clock, attended by, very well attended by our county departments. First meeting of probably, what, five? Something like that through December. Hopefully have a have a finished product by December on that, something that'll help guide the county over the next five years and beyond. Maybe by that time it'll need to be revised or whatever, but at least provide some guidance and vision and direction for the county. It's kind of an exciting process that I think with all the departments and staff's input, we'll end up with a pretty good document. So anyway, that's why we're having a five o'clock meeting this evening and periodically we like to try and do an evening session to allow the public to attend. With that said, any late items for the agenda? So that I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve tonight's Harney County meeting agenda.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the July 2nd, 2025 county court agenda. Any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye. Aye? And opposed? In hearing none, motion carries. We have four sets of minutes. You want to approve them individually or all at once?
If you both have had the opportunity to, you know, give any feedback if you needed to, then I'm all for doing all four of them at once.
Okay, so what we have then is a June 17th work session, corner preservation and county surveyor meeting minutes, a June 18th regular session minutes, June 25th special session cemetery care contract extension meeting minutes, and a June 25th budget hearing to adopt the 2025-2026 Harney County budget meeting minutes. Entertain a motion?
I move to accept the minutes as present.
I second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes for the sessions described and mentioned, listed. Any further discussion? All favored, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? And opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, next topic is opportunity for public comment. We don't have anybody in the room this evening and I don't see anybody online either, so we'll be, we'll move along. If somebody comes along late, we'll see if we how things are moving, if we have time to do public comment later. All business, we moved the wolf resolution, we're tabled it last time, moved it to this one just as a placeholder, or if there is action to be taken. Commissioner Frank?
This wolf resolution has been reviewed by the N-RAC, who includes a member from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, and I think it would be a good idea for the county to show where they're at on the wolves. This particular resolution only has one ask, and that is that Congress legislatively removed the gray wolf from the endangered species list in the state of Oregon. In the, in the working draft that I shared with you, there were some other asks that were kind of highlighted and had question marks because I was unsure those were the working origin concept, but last night we had a conversation at the N-RAC meeting and we talked about how even if it is delisted federally, saying something about to the effect of that the state allocates sufficient resources for wildlife services and ODFW to administer, properly administer wolf management, they thought it wouldn't be a bad idea to put something like that in there, even though this doesn't have a lot of teeth, this is something that we can send to our federal representatives and congressmen. We can send this to NACO to show that we support a resolution that's been submitted to them. By adding that part about the state, we could share that with our state representatives and, and the governor to, to show that there is a need for proper resource allocation for this issue. So if we wanted to take action on it, I would actually, I would suggest that we amend it to add that second part, but I am open to that.
If, if the wolf is delisted from the Endangered Species Act, I'd imagine it's still going to retain a whole lot of protection. What's that going to look like for management? Has that, has that been discussed as if it's, if it's removed from the Endangered Species Act, which a lot of automatic protections come with? I'm sure there's going to still be a lot of general protections. So has that been discussed of what that'll look like?
Yeah, the Oregon Wolf Management Plan is pretty comprehensive and is updated periodically, and it has the state broken into two zones, the east zone and the west zone for management. And right now, the, the east zone, I, I want to say is in phase three, which means we already have established wolf populations at a certain level, and they're not threatened with extinction or endangerment, but that eastern management zone is split between endangered and non-endangered. And so if the only thing that changed was they were removed from the endangered species list, there would need to be more funding so that we could promptly manage them. And the ODFW agent said last night that it is a a big burden on local agencies when they have to deal with these wolf issues. And a good example would be Willow County had a, a real bad wolf problem about a month ago. They were having lots of depredations, and one of the reasons they have such a hard time keeping staffed is because it is such a burdensome issue without enough resources, and it burns people out. And our wildlife services, which has a conversation that we had at the last meeting, we talked about wildlife services, but wildlife services is absolutely instrumental to our local ODFW administering the wolf management plan and managing wolf populations. Without that resource, they would be way too short of staffed. So I, I do think it's appropriate to ask for funding. However, if we pass this resolution to show support of the Pet and Livestock Protection Act, which is in Congress, and to show NACO that we support their resolution to delist the gray wolf, we could always come back at a later time. If it were delisted, maybe we could more pointedly have an ask for Oregon. It might be a good idea to keep federal and state separate. I don't, I could go either way.
And in your view, what is the what are the time sensitivities to this or a subsequent one for Oregon?
I would say a time sensitivity for this is there's a resolution I mentioned that's going to go before the Natural Resource Steering Committee at the National Association of Camp, National, NACO. And that is in two weeks, so July 11th. No, we, the Commissioner Andrus from Union County is a co-sponsor for that resolution, and so he's going to represent because he'll be back there. And in their steering committee meeting they had on Friday, several other counties signed on to it, I think from not just Oregon, but from around the West. So it should have lots of support, but this would be one more piece of support. And I think I know I've had a lot of community members, and you probably have too, reach out about wolf problems. There's been depredations in Riley. We've had wolf activity on the stinking waters. And I, I think this reinforces our stance that the county government recognizes that this is an issue, and that we take an official stance on it.
So if delisted, would our wildlife services agent have authority to deal with a problem animal? Or is it still going to be very cumbersome to to take action?
I don't want to misspeak, and that's a great question, but I, I do think we foster talked about that and said, because Harney County is split, and I, I think if it's on the endangered side, it's a lot more ticklish with how wildlife services can interact with it, whereas when it's on the unendangered side, it's a little more, but I think there could be more delegation of powers, I believe.
We're uncomfortable signing this today, and then we can take up an Oregon one further down as appropriate. I'd still like us to have something that is available for the NACO conference, for Commissioner Andrus or anyone else to have another one if you need to.
So I'd like to read this for the record. Res- uh, resolution number 2025-12, resolution requesting legislative removal of the gray wolf from the endangered species list in Oregon. So, so can they do that by state? The endangered species list state by state, or is it blanket across the?
They can do it state by state. They can move that line. Ideally, we would want them to be listed.
Nationwide?
Nationwide. But when I was having conversations with Senator Nash, talking about them moving the endangered line in Oregon, he's, he said, we need all of Oregon out of it. So just looking out for our own interest, I didn't include the whole West.
This being the second day of July 2025, and a day set aside for regular meeting of the Harney County Court, and there being President William Hart County Judge, Patty Doro County Commissioner, and Rob Frank County Commissioner, and whereas the United States Congress has the authority to legislatively, legislatively remove species from the protection of the Endangered Species Act, ESA, and whereas wolves west of Highway 395, 395, 78, 90, oh, 78 and 95 are listed on the Federal Endangered Species Act, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service makes management decisions regarding harassment and take of wolves in response to wolf livestock conflict in this region. And whereas wolves east of, east of Highway 395, 78, 95 are federally delisted and managed under the Oregon Wolf Conservation and Management Plan, Wolf Plan, with full authority to make decision on harassment and take. And whereas the conservation population objective of at least seven breeding pairs for three consecutive years set forth in the Wolf Plan was achieved in 2015, 2015. And wolves statewide were subsequently delisted by the Oregon Fish and Wildlife Commission. And whereas Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, ODFW, documented 25 packs with 17 breeding pairs of wolves in 2024, and whereas the minimum known wolf count at the end of 2024 was 204, an increase of 15% over 2023. And whereas wolves are not in danger of extinction, extinction endangered, or at risk of becoming so in the foreseeable future, threatened throughout all or significant portion of the, of the Oregon, and and whereas the current ESA stat, status of the gray wolf in Oregon impedes the state's ability to effectively manage the species in a way that complements the modern landscape. And whereas human interactions with wolves within proximities that pose a risk to safety are increasingly occurring, and and whereas it is the duty of the Harney County Court to protect the interests of its citizens. Now therefore, it being resolved that the Harney County, that Harney County requests Congress legislatively remove the gray wolf from the endangered species list in the state of Oregon.
And I, just formatting wise, we need to remove that, the, in front of, of the Oregon, and then.
And then the other one, and, and whereas.
Yeah, and on that, just because I'm curious, is the last whereas have the bold and, or should that, should that end be struck? How do you usually do that?
This, this and should be stripped, and it's, and it just continues, and whereas.
And then we should have signed on this date, you know, kind of conjunction with our signatures, something with the date that we sign. Can you pull up a?
Well, I'm working on that. Okay, I'm trying to find it.
I, I appreciate the N-RAC's advice that it doesn't hurt to throw something in there about state, but I think one thing at a time, if we get it delisted, then you can make a more effort. I know several counties are starting to develop their own wolf plans, county wolf plans.
And then down here, they got and is capitalized whereas.
Adequate resources. I mean, that's not very.
So then, if some last page, all those signature blocks, there should be.
Does that intersect with this state, whatever, or is it?
I mean, have a format from a previous.
Do they need, I mean, you, I love doing things unilaterally, but I don't know that, you know.
For me, you pull up another resolution.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I had the Wolf Committee before, Kristen did, so I understand. Not a whole lot's changed. Instead, the numbers go up, 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 and the money goes to the state of Oregon.
Okay.
Want to do it down?
No, that's a good question.
Yeah, because the resolution itself has been adopted, so.
In so much of our stuff, federal and state policy has to strive to be consistent with local policy, but if you write your local policy after a state policy is adopted, wouldn't you need to make yours consistent with theirs? You could, you could be more stringent in it in some ways, maybe, but. In prison, and you're coming right out.
Where are they? Yeah. When you find it's down.
There's this?
What kind of, what kind of bears?
Just black bears.
Black bears. Or are they doing? In my house? Are they near my house?
No, I don't think they should be out beyond their, their nature up in the forest.
Uh, I can then raise this up. This should be down here.
Like that?
Yep, sorry.
No? Yeah, but the first bit, I think that's seven pages.
Okay.
Because we're waiting for the printer, if this resolution were to pass, what are the typical next steps on a resolution like this? What kind of action is taken? Do we send it to our representatives? What would we do with this other than?
Sometimes it just, it's just filed in the Commissioner Journal, but because it exists and has, and will have been approved, it can be attached to, you know, correspondence or whoever you want to send it to.
A resolution basically is, is the point, is the position of the court. It, it states the position of the, of the governing body. An order would be ordering something to take place. An ordinance is a, is basically a law, a local county law or regulation.
During, during COVID, the county court, at the request of, of people, were asked to pass a resolution declaring that Harney County would not mandate the COVID shots nor use vaccine passports. And we did that at that time. And there were some people in public health that didn't like it, but you know, I mean, it was an action we were able to do, and whether it would have held much weight should the state or feds try to be more forceful. You know, employers, you know, forced may put pressure on people to, to make a medical decision that they wanted, they felt was that the organization thought was important. But whether that could have had any enforcement in any way, we didn't know. It did protect our county employees at least. And, you know, that's, we can make resolutions saying as a position of court on behalf of our people to do this or to say this or to proclaim this. We didn't make an ordinance when we, it was a resolution.
So with those changes being made, I will entertain a, a motion to adopt resolution 2025-12 as read.
I so move to approve resolution number 2025-12, requesting legislative removal of the gray wolf from the endangered species list in Oregon is read.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution number 2025-12, resolution requesting legislative removal of the gray wolf from the endangered species list in Oregon. Any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye. Aye? And opposed? In hearing none, motion carries. Next, under new business, resolution 2025-15, and is in the matter of buildings, in the matter of buildings comprising the Harney County Annex. Um, so this kind of stems from our Justice Center project wherein funding was granted. Excuse me, funding was, was awarded to Harney County in 2023 in the, in the legislative session in 2023 for corporate-related services in the courthouse annex. This was, at the time, the plan was the Lincoln Building. The Lincoln Building was never officially designated the courthouse annex by, by anything other than just word of mouth. Over the, we, we've never spent that money because it wasn't, it wasn't fiscally prudent to just waste $3 million on a project that we may never finish. These serve, this money was, would have been towards Circuit Court services, and the plan at the time was the third floor of the Lincoln Building being the Circuit Court facility, which the $3 million wouldn't even have finished that, that floor. And along with it, there's all kinds of other infrastructure, utilities, electrical, water, sewer, HVAC, everything else that would have had to have been done to the building as well to even facilitate and make the third floor just a circuit court facility functional. And that would have done nothing for the sec, for the first and basement floors. So we never expended those funds. As time went on, it became evident that we weren't going to be able to get any funds, which was estimated as time goes on. I think original estimates were around 12 to 14 million dollars for that project, but after COVID and after uh, supply chain shortages and everything, that, that cost is probably up around 25 million right now. There, we had no, no insight picture where we would get those funds at. So it made no sense again to use that $3 million for that building for that purpose. So we went back and the funds were awarded to us through Oregon Justice Department. We went back to them and asked them if we could use it in other means that were still related to court services, which would mean we've decided to build our jail in a different location, and where the portions of that construction that were court-related services, we could use that money for. So they went back to, they had to go back to the legislature, legislation, the, uh, this, this session to get that re, redelegated, re-designated, reauthorized, whatever, whatever term to use there. Um, and in the discussions, they said if it does stay, if the verbiage, and I haven't seen the verbiage yet, we don't know. It's my understanding that it was approved, but I haven't seen the language in the, in the, in the bill yet. That if it's still stated court annex, then we needed to designate the facility where we wanted to spend that, those dollars as the court annex. So this officially, would officially then by the court designate the existing structure of where the district attorney's office, the law library, victims' witnesses, advocacy, and those other other services in that facility, 911, the sheriff's office, the jail, as the official of Harney County Annex. That's what this resolution is for. And then in future documentation, when anybody refers to the Harney County Annex, it will be referring to that, to that building.
So the planning, building, emergency management, what does that building refer to as?
Well, I've heard that building referred to as the annex as well.
I've ever referred to it.
And again, there's nothing official naming it the annex, but as a result of this, I was kind of trying to brainstorm myself as to what are we going to call that building down there? We don't call it anything, maybe. So, um, resolution number 2025-15 in the matter of, of buildings comprising the Harney County Annex. Whereas Harney County operates multiple facilities to provide essential, essential public services to its residents, and whereas the county annex serves as the central location for several county functions and off, functions and offices, now therefore be it resolved by the Harney County Court as follows. The Harney County Law Library, Harney County District Attorney's Office, the 911 Dispatch Center, 911 Dispatch Department, Harney County Jail are hereby designated as being located with, within the Harney County Annex. All official county documents, just, uh, documents, directories, and public communications shall reflect that the law, library, district attorney's office, and jail are part of the county annex facility. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. This is, I don't know, something that we threw together. If there's anything you'd like to add to it or clarify or change?
Um, when I had, um, recommended we add in the 911 Dispatch Department, it is added in the first bullet. It is not added in the.
In the second bullet.
That's, and we don't break out the sheriff's office per se. I didn't know.
Yeah.
And then, once I was looking at that, I was like, I'll just wait till court and see what you.
As I read it, I saw, thought the same, saying, thought the same thing. If we're gonna designate or identify all the different functions or services that are located within that building, then the sheriff's office should probably be in there as well.
So maybe we could make those corrections on the two bullets.
So you want to add the, do you want to call it the shared department or what do you?
Sheriff's Office. The Harney County Sheriff's Office. It's, it's, it's referred to just for future, whatever. It's not a department. It's an office because it's an elected, elected official.
And then you just want to add dispatch down here?
Um, dispatch and sheriff's office down here to the, to the second bullet. Let's add up here under this, let's add it, Harney County Courthouse Annex.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it.
Got a mind of its own right now. What is happening?
It's the AI.
I think it might be. I don't even, I, I think I have to, I don't know if I'm going to lose this, but I think I have to restart this.
Oh yeah, it's been accident, accident. It didn't even ask, ask you to save, did it?
I can't even hit close right now. Oh, there we go. That was wild. I'm glad you saw that. I was like, ah.
First of his coming back.
Huh?
First of his coming back.
Yeah, I think there was a gremlin in there.
Okay, so it did save the sheriff office and dispatch.
It saved the stuff you already added. Okay.
All right, any more changes?
Any more edits? Okay, that should be moved with that.
You're on both bullets.
I don't know. I'm not sure. Another one they were asking for wasn't, or what they were going to get was.
So I will entertain a, a motion to approve resolution number 2025-15.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen in the matter of buildings comprising the Harney County Court Annex.
Courthouse Annex.
Courthouse Annex. So did she change that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
A motion's been made and and seconded uh to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. In the matter of buildings comprising the Harney County Courthouse Annex. Um as read and discussed, any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Bring none, motion carries. Next topic is recognition of wildland firefighters. Today is. Um July second is wildland firefighter recognition. Uh day. And while we're at the end of the day, um I did ask Holly today, if you've seen the Facebook social media post, I asked her to put um. Um, a post on there about that, recognizing them as we are in and we continue to get deeper into wildfire season. Um and recognize the. The efforts and sacrifices of our wildland firefighters, whether it be our uh BLM Forest Service, RFPA. Uh ODFW or um uh uh Oregon Department of Forestry. Or whatever, um but those people very much so put their lives on the line uh in protection of our. Natural resources in our homes and and properties. I think that's evident in the fact that uh Harney County itself suffered a loss. In nineteen ninety-four uh from a local. Uh Harney County born individual in Storm King Fire. So it's 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 very evident that that this is a dangerous profession and and I just wanted to. Recognize them and say thank you. In an unofficial manner.
Thank you.
That's. Um, correspondence. Um, couple of things from the Forest Service, Forest Service News Release, Mount here National Forest. Norse Zone Fire Danger Moves to Moderate. Um Norse Zone would be Blue Mountain and Prairie City Ranger Districts. And Forest Service News Release, Mount here National Forest. Um moves to high, is that uh?
Yeah, that escalated quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Week apart.
It's the dates on these.
Does anybody heard about the?
July one, June, yeah. Okay.
The what's that? Treetop Ranch Fire from last night, did that get put out?
I haven't heard any more update on it. So then disregard the the moderate because uh as of July first, Mount here National Forest moves to high fire danger. John Day Prairie City and Hines. Um. These are all added, but they're just uh like, you know, public information petitions. Um a letter. From um Governor Kotek. To FEMA. Senior official performing the duty of the minister. Or no, from FEMA two. From FEMA two, Governor Kotek. This is in response to your May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five request for a major disaster declaration. For the state of Oregon as a result of flooding during the period of March twelfth to April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Your specifically request, you specifically requested individual assistance for Harney County and the Burns Paiute Tribe. And hazard mitigation statewide. Based on our review of all. Of the information available, it has been determined that the damage from this event was not of such severity and magnitude as to be. Beyond the capabilities of the state affected local governments and voluntary agencies. Accordingly, we have determined that's uh supplemental federal assistance is not necessary. Therefore, I must inform you. That your request for the major disaster declaration is denied. And then a paragraph on appeal, but basically the answer was no as of right now. And then um correspondence from the the US Department of Agriculture Forest Service uh for a forest. Uh timber sale. Notification. It's all I have for correspondence. Any other correspondence that the commissioners would like to add?
Do you think the state will pursue or it's worth encouraging the state to pursue appeal to that denial for FEMA funds?
Um, it's always worth it, but I don't know as it was a stretch in the first place. I think really, I I don't think that the the criteria that FEMA uses is a pretty big. Pretty big threshold to get over. And when you, you know, when you talk about a uh natural disaster like a hurricane or an earthquake that has major damage associated to it. That's on a big scale, usually affecting larger population centers. Then but 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 what happened here in Harney County in Burns affected us just as dramatically as it would affect Houston, Texas. Or or Galveston, Texas during Hurricane Sandy. Or not Sandy, Sandy was on the East Coast, but hurricane that that they had. Um, so I don't I I don't think it would matter. You you could appeal, but I. I don't think it would matter myself. I don't think they're gonna see it that way. I think the, I think their uh criteria for a disaster and. Kinda needs to be changed. They have a one-size-fits-all criteria. I can ask our emergency manager to consult with OEM staff and see if there is any. Any potential or um. Any add me forward there. See what they think. Any other correspondence? Scheduling um next meeting, our next county court session in July sixteenth at ten AM. Uh nine thirty, uh counts payable, bill pay uh bill review, ten o'clock regular county court session. Any other? Meetings of note. Between now and then.
Um. Commissioner Frank, are you gonna be going to the big meeting on the eighth of July?
Yes.
Most of mine are Zoom kind of meetings. Regular stuff.
Same for me, just my normal obligations.
As Commissioner Dorum noted, there is a BIC meeting on the eighth. There is a. Whatever CWMA stands for, the Weed Management Group is doing a field trip on the ninth. Which would probably be informative and good networking with local agencies, but I don't know if I'll make it on that. There's a community-based water planning coordinating meeting on the tenth. Which that group is starting to do the strategies for their implementation implementation phase. They've completed their plan and that will go before the Water Commission in September, I think, for approval, their integrated plan. And there's a Fair Board meeting on the evening of the fourteenth, Monday, the fourteenth.
Can you look at the accounting webpage real quick, like in events, if the fair meeting has been changed or not, please?
Uh, Farm Animal Day on the tenth. Ranch Rodeo, July eleventh. Dry Barn Invitational Dog Show, Fair Board Meeting on the fourteenth at the Memorial Building, July fourteenth, six to seven thirty.
Did you say Ranch Rodeo on the eleventh?
July eleventh and twelfth.
Just for the record, for. People out there that might view this later on, the Fair Board schedules are on the county. Events calendar.
Um, I don't have anything on scheduling.
Court updates, um general deliberation, basically.
I just, I would like um for us to soon um. Talk about the emerg- uh economic development contract and RFP and whatever we are thinking. I would like us to um, I I mentioned this last time, the deflection program and. See what is the future of that, what are the options? Um. Uh, what is? As a follow-up for the corner preservation meeting uh and learning that our fees. And I know the fees keep growing, but the fees for corner preservation have not increased in many years. Um, when is it that all the fees are getting updated? Is it a?
Holly's working on the fee list right now. We'll have to do it. We have to pass it in an ordinance. We have to read it twice. And then it becomes effective on the second.
Is that something we should discuss and and decide? Do you feel that, you know, should we put it as a gen item or just talk about it now? Um. Is, is that, how often? Is it okay to change fees every year if we need to?
Yeah, as far as I know, by ordinance, we can change them at any time. It's just that because it's cumbersome and you have to read it twice and everything. It's just to get on some kind of an annual review and and uh. Implementation of one.
Well, maybe it'll be for next year then, but um for us to consider whether we wanna raise that one or not. Um, let's see how. Things proceed since we've had that meeting.
Yeah.
Um, or is our personal service a contract being drafted?
Uh, I gotta work w- work with county council on it. I just haven't had a chance to get to it.
Okay, um. Forest plan, uh I was wondering. I guess there's some more public meetings are gonna start up on. I haven't really caught up with my emails right now, but I thought I saw there was something about, you know, they're gonna have some more meetings. And of course, the BIC originally was formed to uh directly um influence. The county's perspective as partners with the forest plan and development of the plan. And so. Um, is that still where they focus their attention in the BIC? Who's in the government council?
Yes, it is. Uh, they have kept postponing those public input meetings. They've kept postponing those public input meetings and I don't know when they have them scheduled for, but they will definitely be coming to Burns. We just had a call.
Okay.
That's that's the plan. We just had a call with the regional. Forest Service Director Jacqueline Buchanan, maybe is her name. And expressed that we are really excited about this plan, that it is an improvement. And we talked about the collaboration that's taken on, taken place during the BIC. And so she is championing for us to be able to move forward and get it on the register because. There was a little hiccup there and they were worried about that, but why I got so excited is because I haven't seen the memo. But another commissioner received a memo that said travel management is suspended indefinitely. Which has been one of the biggest bones of contention with this county and with that plan and travel management was. Intentionally left out of that plan, and people are still real gun shy about it and nervous. And he, when I was on the phone with him, opened an official memo from Forest Service that said it's suspended. So that's exciting.
So I wonder if that went away because of the they re- they removed that um. Don't know what the rule was, but it had, it was a a rule that. That natural resource agencies, Forest Service, P L M. Um, about roads.
Um. Okay, it was not travel. Was there something besides travel management that was had some action on it? A month ago or something probably on Harvey County farm, they could try to lift up something, but at any rate, that is good news. Um. I was trying to find a photo, but. Yeah, the big one.
Roadless rules decision.
Yeah, that's it. The roadless rules. What is that?
Uh, a fifty-nine million acre win for the grand reopening of our public lands. Uh, on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, the USDA. Announced a significant step in the grand reopening of our public lands with a decision to rescind the roadless rule. This move eliminates outdated restrictions, making way for responsible forest management and access across our nation's national forest. Uh, what was the rule? So I mean, what was the?
I guess I just wasn't sure what it was. And I didn't go researching it.
Roadless. The two thousand and one. Uh, the two thousand and one roadless rule, so it's been in place since two thousand and one. That rule established prohibitions on road construction, road reconstruction. And timber harvest on fifty-eight point five million acres of national forest. So it have have basically. Opened up or reopened access to a lot of forest. But I wonder if that kinda has something to do with travel management, because that's what travel management is. If they if they got rid of the roadless rule. Then they kinda have to rethink their travel management objectives.
Mm-hmm.
Very well, um. I appreciate uh Commissioner Frank representing us on the big and, you know, I hope it's a continues to be a useful endeavor. Um, the CCP, the comprehensive. Conservation Plan for the Refuge, you know, I worked that meeting recently and of course I I don't go to him too often, but um. You know, they've, they were talking about the fact that they're on a pause and the pause, I said, how long is the pause? They said three years. So the pause will be two twenty twenty-eight, which. In my mind, coincides with the presidential election year. Just couldn't help but notice that. And um, they just talked around things. It wasn't, it was only. An hour or so meeting on that. So, I'm I'm not really sure how how active that endeavor's gonna be. They're still gonna have meetings. But they're supposedly on pause, so.
I think they they were jumping the gun on redoing that plan anyway, which they're doing intentionally, giving themselves plenty of time. And since that planning is on pause, but I think the pivot is gonna be now those meetings are gonna focus on how they can. Implement some strategies and test them out, like changing season of grazing and stuff, kinda do some trial.
Yes.
So that when they, when they come off pause, they can say, we've already tried these things and we know they work or we know they don't work. And they can get them in the plan without pushback. So hopefully it'll be a positive thing that'll improve our usage of the refuge.
Okay.
Hopefully.
We're just trying to get those. That's all I just comments.
Yeah. The, I CC both of you with the comments that I sent to our. Are legal uh about the rack five twelve comments. And so you can look at those and chime in. They're really good and it's because Harmony Burrright helped. She really did a fantastic job. And so I I think it's worth noting, especially for the record. She is a water policy specialist with over twenty years' experience and she has been. And she has been contracted through High Desert Partnership to help community members that wanna submit public comment. So they can go talk to her and express her interest, whatever their viewpoint is, on whichever side of the matter and she can help them do it. In a coherent way, which is.
I look forward to reading those, I did not read what you sent yet, but um is that something that? You intend to read aloud at a public hearing for public comment? As well as, I mean, is it lengthy, so lengthy or?
Oh, it's pretty lengthy. But.
Can you do it in a more abbreviated, but also some uh, I don't know, can you do both?
My, my vision for those is Dominic's gonna look at them, he's not gonna be able to chime in until next week, cuz he's busy. But he, he skimmed over them and he has some things he'd like to add, we'll talk about that.
I saw he liked the comments, though.
We'll bring it to the court and if the court signs off on it, then as a court, as a force. We can submit them to OWRD, but I also think we need to submit them to the governor and to our representatives. And probably figure out a way to abbreviate that down so that it can be given orally. At our next public comment periods in August and also at the commission meeting.
Would it be appropriate at, at the next meeting here? Once we have an abbreviated thing for us to all three stand up and, and you read it or, or something and, and we'll just say on behalf of people. The county court's public comment for this is as follows or something or not, I, I haven't seen that happen, I don't know if that's. If they allow it that way, if it's gotta be an individual each time.
I don't know if that's necessary, but I think being sure on August fourth, when we have public comment at the community center. We can do something to that effect and.
I'm open for whatever.
Think about it, this is a big important thing and, and if there's, if we should. We're willing. You know, but I'd kinda like you to advise us on, on that.
The only portion, and I, I read the first couple pages and skimmed through the rest of it, cuz it is rather lengthy. Uh the, the one point I think that I'd like to see expanded on is the uh. Where the cities, oh, this is gonna affect Burns and Hines. And their allocations.
This would.
Direct uh impact on economic development.
In, in fact, um our justice of the peace who was sitting beside me today earlier was talking about that and how. They're not gonna be able to build the housing that. You know, that we all think is gonna get built here, uh et cetera, and I said, well, the cities will need to get involved quickly then, I said, I know that. Years ago. They came to one or two meetings and, you know, we haven't seen them a lot and. It is important, so.
Well, I mean, obviously they're, I think they're gearing up now to, to provide some kind of statement, um or comments. But um we're all part of the same team and if, if our comments could include the impact to the municipalities, I'd like to do that myself.
Yeah, I think. I can reach out to Harmony because I think she's working with them and make sure that our comments. Are in lockstep with theirs, because it touches on it a little bit, but. I, I agree that we should expand on that.
And I originally, I mean, maybe I misunderstood, but I originally thought that these, these uh rulings or these five twelve rules. Were not gonna affect. Burns and Hines.
Years ago. At some of the community-based water planning meetings. The city managers or. I think it was city managers of Burns and Hines. Said they thought they were fine, that it wouldn't affect them. Different people, years have passed.
Well, and I can understand it has a huge impact to. How much irrigation can be saved because they, they use such a small amount of their water, right? And I'm sure that they would be willing to be a team player, but the hundred and ten percent was kind of an arbitrary number because they were never at the table. And that is gonna need to be addressed before they move forward. We've spoke, still not gonna support it, but whatever number they come up with. I'm not so sure that a ten percent increase in what they currently have couldn't. Couldn't handle the load of an extra hundred and fifty houses, but they're the experts on it and if they say this is how much we need, then that's what I would support.
Well, it, it, they need to do that analysis and determine what. What amount they really need.
We'll make a note of that and I will reach out. Oh, gosh. Oh, at the last meeting, we asked to maybe pick the N R X brain about the big beautiful bill. And some language that was in there about selling off the public lands and apparently according to them. That portion of the bill has died, the land was first been got removed, but there were lands in Hardy County that were eligible for that program, so. We'll just keep an eye on it, but as of now, it's gone.
That was my understanding too, as of since our last meeting, that, that those amendments did not get adopted.
I. I spoke to Merkley's staff yesterday because I. Made some comments to Jessica Keens about some of the language used and so I had a conversation with her and Meredith, who is Merkley's person in charge of. Help funding and natural resources. And he is going to present a wildfire resilient communities act, I think, next week. And I, I don't think it's a terrible act. I, I did say that I think there should be less emphasis on climate change as the reason and talk about management for the last thirty years. And when we got done talking about that. They also told me he is going to try a timber production expansion guaranteed loan program, which basically. Is because they are recognizing that we don't have the infrastructure to handle the amount of material that needs to come out of our forests. To restore them to a healthy state. And so this would be a loan program, I think if you're within two hundred and fifty miles of the federal forest and there's not another mill operation. You could get these government guaranteed loans to put in infrastructure. Which, and she said, if either of these bills are things that you individually or the Hardy County Court want to. Let's not vouch for. Endorsers, they'd love to have that endorsement. I read through the bill about the timber production and expansion guarantee and I, I think it sounds good, except for I don't like the government being a bank.
And it says guarantee, what does that mean? It's fairly guaranteed, meaning, I mean, if, if someone takes the loan and tries to. Establish or run a mill and if they're not successful. They still owe, they owe money, right? I mean, is, is it like, what does it, the loan guarantee mean? I don't wanna assume I know what that means.
A loan guarantee under the program should be provided in accordance to conditions and security means is necessary. But I don't know what that means.
Uh yeah, I mean, does it, does it guarantee that the end of, that the entity applying for it will receive the loan? Or does it mean that the loan is guaranteed by the government that if the individual defer, the en- entity defaults? Then they pay it.
I think that's what it is, I think it's just.
That's guaranteed by.
We just, we just received our signed contract through the Oregon Department of Agriculture for grasshopper and Mormon cricket treatment. We'll get ninety thousand dollars this year, Soil and Water Conservation District will administer the program and they've already started to work on it. And. The, the infestation is not as bad this year as it's been in the past, it's much more mild, they've had some in the Drusey area. And some down south, but nothing like we see in the past, if we don't utilize all those funds. We can use them to pay O D A to do surveys in the fall, population surveys, or we can roll it over to next year. Or we can share it with neighboring counties that are having more of a struggle.
The timing of the treatments, et cetera, um are we? This is for next year?
This is for this year and.
When do they need to be treated?
Right now, that's why it was very time sensitive and before, we don't have to check yet and S W's, it's a cost share program. So they've already contacted everyone that participated last year and done their outreach and Nick Schott said that usually. Usually they're done coming out by the fourth of July, so if we get them treated. The odds of a big blow up are, but it's been such a wet year that as the lake recedes, that could.
Refresh my memory, the type of chemical that's being used. Is, is used after they come out during the, the pupil stage or whatever. There's another chemical that can be used before they come out, but the one that's being used is after they're patched, right?
I don't know a whole lot about the chemicals and I've. Overheard the people who do understand talking about. Some successes they've had with that pre, pre-pupil. Stuff and I don't know why we don't use that or what the regulations are, but. I'm thankful for S W C D.
I remember a call last time, it had something to do with availability of that other chemical. There just wasn't that much availability, if I recall, and I might be wrong, but.
Could be, uh let's see, one other thing. Oh, fair facility update. We had a work session with our. Building Department Officer, not officer.
Building official?
Building official. Our building official, the construction company. The fair and the event center committee. To line out what we need to accomplish so that we can have fair. In the facility, the facility will not be completed, but. We wanted to make sure that if we have the part of the structure up. Where we need to be at so that we can get a temporary occupancy certificate or license. And I think that was a productive meeting and we'll stay in contact with the building official. Had another meeting today with the construction crew and they are not very far behind schedule, even with all the flooding we had. They're expecting to have all the footings done by the end of next week and then metal will start going up. And right now, the goal is to have the entire overhang, I misspoke at that last meeting, I was misinformed, but Terry Helbush asked. And I said, I think they're just gonna use the overhang. They're planning on having the overhang done and the steel for the main part of the building. May or may not have the roof on it, but the steel will be up, so you'll be able to see what the footprint of the building is. And all of the pens will be set up in there, we'll work with the local fire chief and fire marshal, make sure ingress and egress with all the pens.
If there's no roof on it. Does that change the rules for occupancy, so to speak? I mean, if it's unroofed area that is being used for fair this year for livestock and new panels, is that, is that what we're talking about? Then because it's not, but. Walls, I mean, the occupancy rules, you know, have to do with public safety, getting out if there's a fire or something, you know, people need to. Uh get out safely. You're thinking moan. You don't know, but you're saying, they kinda don't think the roof will be up, right, by fair, that's questionable.
It's questionable.
Questionable. And. That won't interfere with. So what does the building official have to wrestle with, I guess, or the, the different things that state?
Basically, fire life safety.
Fire life safety.
Is, is what it comes down to, is, is uh taking mitigating steps. To. Ensure the sa- public safety. Whether that's um, and whether it has a roof or four walls or whatever it has, but um. What is it gonna, what kind of measures are they gonna have to put in place to ensure the safety of the public? And I know that I've heard some topics or ideas or potentials or whatever, such as a fire watch. Uh such as having fire apparatus on scene. Who, I don't know, you know. Just some of the things that have been kicked around that I've heard, I don't know what it's gonna look like in the end or what's gonna be required in the end, but.
Our next step is to reach out to the fire chief and the fire marshal and, and Lindsay may already have a meeting scheduled with them set up. So that we can show them our plans for how we're gonna set it up and find out what measures we need to take to protect. Life and safety.
I hope, I hope that maybe the fair board can put out a letter. In the paper to the community when it's a little closer. You know, kind of, since they're doing it, them, their words, their explanation of. Uh what to expect at fair this year, you know, regarding the fair event center progress. And then, of course, we can post it on our, our social media and our website as well, once it's, if, once they write it, I get occasionally asked and I will say, well. You know, the building's, you know, under construction for the next two months and. You know, we'll see, we'll know more closer to fair, I just kinda boot it down that way, I, and I would say if you have detailed questions, tell all the fair manager, therefore. So it just, I know they're busy, but it would be just great if they can get on top of that next month. You know, so that there's plenty of awareness.
That would be good, I agree.
Hope that's all I had. I had, I made this note at county college, T S P C plan, ten year. Do you know what that means? It's not thrift savings plan. Is that not ringing a bell?
Read it again.
It sound, T S P plan, ten year, it sounded really important at the time, so I made a note.
I'm sensitive.
Yeah, something support program?
I'm s- I don't know. We talked about the road. Deal that road departments do.
Transportation safety plan?
Ooh, that might be it, yeah, I was gonna ask about that, do we have one of those, is that some of your view?
I believe the road department now. If that's housed within the road department. I believe. I might have a copy on my shelf in there too. Look for it, I'll let you know.
Did they um talk about the C F A A at all during county college, just curious this last time? I didn't, I just wondered if they gave an update in, in any way. Cuz the A O C was very involved in. Helping to represent the county's interests during those negotiations and work, work sessions with the governor's office and O, O H A, et cetera. I was proud of them for looking out for the counties.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else? I don't have a whole lot, um I wanted to mention that in the legislative um asks. But tentatively until the governor signs it or not, we have, were awarded or it was passed, we get three million dollars for flood mitigation. To uh, you know, to include um. Funds repair and improvement, uh flood resistance. Infrastructure and they also, it, it kinda gave examples like dredging of the river, removing. foliage or whatever that might be restricting flow, those kind of things, so. There might be some cooperative. Some cooperative efforts with the city of Burns that we could use a portion of that for and their mitigation. Um efforts, will that be a pump station? Um we still have some.
Could any of that be used if we were to develop? The need for applications for a levy uh infrastructure. Grant from Biz Oregon, it requires a twenty percent match.
I would think so, well, it's gonna depend.
You know, I don't know if we're going in that direction.
Yeah, it, it's gonna depend, sometimes you can't use matching funds from the same source, you know, if it's state funds. If it's state funds and we're applying for state funds, I don't know, we'd have to, we'd have to check into that down the road, I don't. It'd be good if it could.
Well, you know, I, I know that when uh. Biz Oregon was talking, they said, you know about the levy, you know. Infrastructure grant program, I said, I said, boy, it, it, I believe it requires a twenty percent match, right? I mean, cuz I just kinda scanned one of their announcements and uh. She said, I don't think so, and then she looked and then she read it correctly and said, yeah, it does, I said, well, that's always gonna be a little challenge for us, but you know, depending on the amount. You know, I, I said, I, you know, Hardy County is well managed, but it will work, we're just.
I, I wanna say the language in it and I don't have the exact language. In front of me, but it, I wanna say it did specifically, or it did mention levy. You know, as far as some of the things like levy, levy maintenance or levy improvements, dredging, et cetera. So it did, it did have the word levy in it, so it just depends on.
Where, when will the county? And any other partners? Need to discuss the vision of um. Flood mitigation.
So our emergency management, the uh director has been in touch with, with um. Corps of Engineers, so say we're here this spring. Corps of Engineers, since they were here this spring, she's followed up with them. I mean, I asked them to come back. But she has made contact with them and following up on that. Um, there's these funds, I don't think we're going to see them this year to the, yeah, then we're going to be able to do any work with it this year.
Would it be great if.
But if we have the planning. Out of the way.
Yeah.
If we have the planning out of the way and I, and identified as to what we need to do, then we've got the funds to do it. But I think we can hit the ground running that way.
Be great.
That would be my hope. Um, so as I mentioned a little bit ago too, on the re. Allocation or whatever of the three million dollars, those were ARPA funds. Al- also the ones that we got in twenty twenty three for the justice center that came through OJD, those were ARPA funds. Um, so again, tentatively, those were, it was approved. But I have not seen the language on it yet. I don't know what it says, what the, what the, you know, any of the. Limitations are on its use yet, whether it was given to us in a whole different manner and said, you know, to be used for the jail. Or if it's still going to have those court services uh attached, requirements attached to it. Um, recently. Uh, the lottery warm site building that the county has, um, it belongs to the state. And again, it was offered to the county for basically economic development purposes in two thousand. Fifteen uh, for a five-year lease. And with a, with a one, with an option for another five-year extension, which brought us to twenty twenty five. Uh, we renewed that lease with, with the state uh, to twenty thirty with. With three options. With fifteen years on top of that. Uh, we're going to continue our relationship at the time, for the time being with MyWave and their use of the facility. Um, they've got some opportunities for customers of their own, but we just re- re-initiated the lease agreement with MyWave and increased their rent. The thousand dollars a month.
Is it fully rented by them or is there some space left that's rentable?
No, they have, they have the entire building.
Okay.
Um, and that's what they're looking at is some other options for data storage op- opportunities. Um, trying to think if there's anything else recently that. We've worked on, now we continue to work on. Paulie, um, the DEQ on their recycling modernization act requirements.
Um, bless your heart.
Um, anything else? You, we've been working on?
Wrapping up, we finished all of our public surplus stuff, so we've got a handful of gateways left in the sorry yard, um.
The sorry yard looked a lot better last time I drove by it. It's getting unjointed.
Yeah.
I know.
Was it about a barbecue, social events for everybody?
Like normally they do, I mean, yeah, we didn't do one last year because of the fires and the smoke. Year before that, we did one, I want to see what was it, July, August, something? I don't remember when it was. But anyways, so we're looking at doing something along those lines for the staff. And we'll bring some cornhole boards out and just have an afternoon, maybe a Friday afternoon or something. For people to come and. Visit and have a good time.
Going back to that flood mitigation, in twenty twenty one, the county had a feasibility study done. That identified ten different options. Which, when I remembered that and looked at it, I got really excited because we got that funding and because a lot of that work's already been done. Because I've been real excited about the prospect of a mitigation project up the river. I did go talk to DLM manager today and he said, it's not a hard no. It would probably take two years in planning. And so I reached out to the Lake County. Um, surveyor to ask how they got theirs done if it was on public land. And sure enough, the city owns the land they grew on. And always has owned the land. I said, but they buy it for that project, so. I don't know what that'll look like, but the fact that a lot of that work's already been done, that they already identified ten solid alternatives. Especially if you try to get more grant money and go for grants and that work's been done because. Before I remember we had that, I was really, really wondering when's the Corps of Engineers going to come do a study for us.
I forwarded all of those documents. Uh, and I know which one you're talking about. I, I don't have a hard copy of them, but I'm pretty sure I have.
A Klein Schmidt or something?
Yeah. Yeah, and I forwarded all of those documents to the Corps of Engineers. Um, because it was probably done by people that preceded them, but they didn't want them to go in and have to redo work that's already been done. To try and streamline the process. So they have all of that. The Corps has all of that. They were impressed actually with a lot of the work that's been done and with all the documents that I was able to get to.
That's exciting.
Yeah. Um. Just kind of as an informational note, um, GEO DC, the board, Greater Eastern Oregon Development. Um, the president of the board resigned last month. Which left me, the vice president, to step up interim as the president. And then the following meeting that we had the following week, the executive director um, tendered her resignation. So uh, I'm going to, in the near future, next week or so, I'm going to have a little travel where I got to go up to Penonton and go meet with the staff up there. Um. Now, I mean, it's county related in the fact that the services that they provide are to the people of Harney County, and to the county itself. But um, it's just one of those side board obligations or commitments. That I have, so I think, I think. On my schedule, I looked at maybe next Thursday, I might Thursday, Friday or something like that, I might run up there and. And uh, visit with the staff up there. I don't have anything else that I can think of off the top of my head. Hearing no other business, I would uh, adjourn our county court.